Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. And because of the Labor Day holiday, this meeting is being held Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. We are in the council chambers newly remodeled and are also live streamed on YouTube. It is after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, September 18th, 2023. Ms. Hamilton, new face here, but an old timer in terms of being with the city and a former clerk of council, so it's like deja vu all over again. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And we have a quorum, and I should point out, Mr. Ansel did notify us that he would not be in attendance tonight. So we'll make that note, too. It's not like he just didn't decide to show up. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I ask that you stand and join the members of Worcester Council and recite.
(Clerk) of the United States of America, and two republics, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the next order on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of June 20th, 2023. That seems like a lifetime ago. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those that are opposed, say nay. And the minutes of June 20, 2023 have been approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome, and long time no see.
That is the truth, President Biden-Dyke and members of council. In fact, I think this has been the longest break that I have ever seen or remember. It was 77 days since last we met, June 20th till September 5th. So with no special meetings or required gatherings, this has been a very nice summer, but unusual, because usually we have one or so of those in between. So our comprehensive plan is still in the works. OHM has gathered the necessary information from our community and is now putting that info into a form that will evolve into our preliminary 2023-24 Comprehensive Plan Draft sometime in October or November of this year. They will then hold meetings and events showcasing the plan and take comments from our community. From these final tweaks, the final plan will be put together and submitted, hopefully before the end of this year. We look forward to this important study document to lead us on in our planning and decision-making. Our Citizen Academy has started again for this year. Our second meeting is tomorrow at noon. We have 16 people from our community that are involved with that and learning what it takes to run a city of over 27,000 people. We think it's a nice group and look forward to continuing with the group. It's been a good summer and many downtown activities, such as farmer's market, music on the square, car shows, and within three and a half weeks, Worcester Fest to move us into the fall season. And the end of this week, the Wayne County Fair takes command of our area. I don't think people can say there's not enough to do in our city. We hope you find your new council chambers here inviting, friendly, and professional. You are still on camera, though, one from the front of the room and one from the back of the room. So council, gotta behave, because people are watching. We have a busy agenda for tonight's meeting and stand ready to help with any questions that you might have. With that, because of the audience that we have here this evening, I know that Joel has been busy talking pickleball and tennis courts all day long. So I'm going to turn it over to him to address the group that's here, because they may not want to sit through the whole council meeting where that's when public comment usually takes place. So I think if you understand where things are at this point, it may help speed your evening along. So Joel, turn it to you.
Well, I haven't played tennis since college, and I've yet to play pickleball, but it looks like it might be a good sport. But obviously, council's aware, last year, after a lot of input from the pickleball group, there was quite a bit of input in needing more pickleball courts. So at that time, we did put some money in the budget to convert a couple of courts at that time. And we did observe the usage of the courts down at Christmas Run over the summer. Looked back at historic usage and how they used to be used with Triway and the high school and those things. Since then, the college has built some new courts, high school has new courts, which are available when they're not in use, but that does limit their availability, so we understand that. And so we've been meeting and listening to people calling and voicing their opinions and met several of staff, met with some members of the pickleball community and tennis community. And during that discussion, one of the things we talked about was the potential of building, just building new courts down at Christmas Run, where there's already the six courts. The issue was, we didn't have enough money budgeted for that this year. So during those discussions, I know Jack Miller had mentioned he and his wife would be willing to help contribute to make that happen. And from what I understand, since then, the group has indicated that they were willing to commit $50,000 to that. So with what we have budgeted this year, with the additional money that's been committed, we think we can find enough money with some of the projects we've done that have come in under budget so far this year, that we could come up with the money, be about $200,000 total, to build new, six new pickleball courts down at Christmas Run Park. And that would preserve the existing tennis courts, so they would stay there. We'd just have to update those a little bit, the surfaces and the facilities down there, and we could build, there's a couple of spots at Christmas Run that are plenty big enough to put six courts in, probably adjacent to the, close to Bowman, going towards Bowman from the basketball court. There's an open area, grassy area there, we could put, there's another area, too, that we could fit those. So we'd have to come to council to approve some of the transfer and then moving forward with that, but I think we could do it and get that started anyway this year with money we have in the budget and the donations that they've so generously offered.
With that, President Biden-Dyke, that's our report to city council tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I'd like to just add a comment for those who are here to talk about tennis and pickleball. Since council won't be addressing that issue this evening, I do appreciate everybody coming out. You're welcome to stay. We'd love to have you every week, every meeting. I am going to be announcing that we'll be having a Public Health Committee meeting on the 18th at 6:30, and the topic will be the pickleball and tennis courts. So that would give you an hour to share your thoughts and concerns, and we'll share any new information and updated information at that time as well. Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay, and those that signed up and speak at the end of the meeting if they so desire.
I did want to add, if I could, I did talk to both the athletic directors at the high school and at the College of Worcester. College of Worcester athletic director said tennis players are welcome on any of their new courts at any time. They are not locked unless there are matches, which end in two weeks, or either team is practicing, and even then, they don't use all the courts when they practice. And while the Worcester High School courts were unlocked this summer, they are now locked. They were unlocked because the lock was broken, and they are now locked again, but they will allow the public to use those tennis courts if you call ahead, so they can go ahead and unlock them. So just want to let people know that that's the status there from both athletic directors, the high school and the College of Worcester.
Thank you all for coming.
We have no petitions tonight, and no one signed up to talk about any agenda item. And that will bring us to committee reports. And rumor had it that Mr. Sanders held a finance committee meeting, so I will turn that over to you if you want to report on it.
No, thank you, Mr. President.
And if you decide not to, I will respect that as well.
No, we did have a finance committee report or a finance committee meeting this evening, and basically it was to discuss bed tax allocation for 2024 for our primary economic partners, and then the, basically utilizing 75% of the proposed roughly 370,000 that we are anticipating that we're going to have be receiving in bed tax money in 2024, and then utilizing the balance of that as part of our twofold. One would be, there'd be a $60,000 amount that could be utilized by some of the community partners that might be looking for some type of funding for some type of economic-type development project. And then we also had allocated $25,000 for the facade program for downtown. And then that left 2% for the city for operation. So it was discussed, none of the economic partners had any comments, other than the fact they were satisfied with that. And that's a recommendation that the finance committee is bringing to council, and the administration will be cleaning up some of the items that we need to do, and we'll be finalizing that here in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We do have a public hearing. It'll be chaired by Mr. Reynolds, deals with College Avenue property rezoning. This time, I'll turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We had before this public hearing on a proposed rezoning of property, being 1.172 acres of land, which is now part of parcel number 64-02329.000. The proposed rezoning is from C2 to R2. It took me a little bit to find this property, but once I found it, it's pretty easy to describe. It's the northwest corner of the First Presbyterian Church property. It's the old Mance church house there. And we'll open this up, and first, we'll ask anybody who's here to speak for the proposed rezoning, and then ask anybody here to speak against it. And all we would ask is that when you go to speak, that you go to the podium, introduce yourself with your name and address, and affirm to tell the truth. So that being said, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning? Is there anyone here prepared to speak against the rezoning? And I would tell, even though she is sitting quietly in the back row, that if council has any questions, Louise Keating is the attorney for the applicant, and I think if pressed, she would answer questions, even though she's not volunteering any information.
I just wanted to affirm for the people at, confirm for the people at home that this is zoning it to, rezoning it to, single residential, which is what that whole street is, except for the church. It just came under the church zoning because it was part of the church. But it'll be rezoned to single, single resident, single-family resident, and that will be consistent with the rest of the street.
That's correct. And this property sits right on the border between R2 and C2. The entire First Presbyterian property is zoned C2, and that was part of that parcel. It was all one single tax parcel. Everything north of that, the next block or so, is R2, single-family homes. And the property we're talking about is a traditional, single-family home that was just used for church purposes in recent decades or maybe longer than that.
I wanted to ask, I might be mistaken, but isn't this the location of, or maybe it was the location of the Mocha House? Is that correct? Okay, so it's no longer being used as an office slash medical facility or counseling center? Okay, so it's just reverting back to residential? I got you. Thank you.
If that is it, and no one is prepared to talk formally for or against the proposal, we will consider this public meeting concluded.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public hearing has been held on the College Avenue rezoning. That brings us to unfinished business. First item on the agenda is amended resolution number 2023-39. It is slated to be presented by Mr. Sanders, and I'll turn the floor over to you now, Mr. Sanders.
Have a read.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's been a long enough.
It's been a long summer.
Yes, but first, we'll have our new clerk, old clerk, former clerk. Read the title.
Amended Resolution Number 2023-39. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with Wayne County and the City of Orville for making an application to the Ohio Department of Development for a small city's Community Development Block Grant for Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP Funds for immediate enactment.
Now, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. President. In light of the request from the administration due to timing related to this piece of legislation, I will motion to table.
All right. Mr. Sanders has moved to table this piece of legislation. Once it's tabled, it has up to a year to be brought back on the agenda. I don't foresee that happening, but after a year, then the matter becomes null and void. So is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. I guess we don't need to have a discussion, so if you would call the roll on the motion to table, I appreciate it.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Wardens.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Amended Resolution Number 2023-39 has been tabled. That brings us to the new business portion of the agenda. First item is ordinance number 2023-20. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings, and it looks like it relates to the public hearing. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2023-20. An ordinance amending Part 11 zoning of the codified ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio to rezone land to R2, single-family residential for property located on the northeast corner of East Bowman and College Avenue.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We've kind of covered this to the extent it could be covered in the public hearing. If, unless there's any questions, I would move that we move to suspend the rules and move this to third and final reading.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Reynolds to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Biden-Dyke, I have a move for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-20.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any discussion, questions? You might not be off the hook there, Ms. Keating, so don't rush away yet. Seeing nothing else, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2023-20 passes. We have ordinance number 2023-21. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It, too, is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance Number 2023-21. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2010-24 by authorizing the mayor to assign the community reinvestment area agreement to R. Miller Land Development LTD for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have with this legislation this evening is a ownership change on the property, and in order to continue the exemption through the final years of '23 and '24, we need to go through this process in order to allow that to happen. Nothing will change with the current situation. Like you say, this is just really just required change due to the property ownership change. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Rules having been suspended, Mr. Sanders, I look to you.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? We've done this before. Seeing none, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 2023-21 passes. We'll look at Resolution 2023-44. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, and my notes say we're on for three readings. It's not a budgeted item. Yes, we're on for three readings. So before I get back to you, Mr. Sanders, I'll ask Ms. Hamilton to kindly read the title of this resolution.
Resolution Number 2023-44. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement for the purchase of meter transmitting units and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this normally would go through Mr. Ansel, but in light of his being out of town, I get the honor of initiating this. Yes, we've got approximately 650 new metering units that we have ordered, and at this point, the cost for those is $70,560. It is something that we need to have, and with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules there, Ms. Hamilton?
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes. Mr. Sanders. Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders, do you have another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second? Tiebreaker, Ms. Warden. Any discussion or questions regarding this? I'm always glad, we are always trying to replace these at least once every 10 years, because like anything that has moving parts, they wear out.
I would ask one question, if I could, of the administration. I'm just curious, and I know I read this and can't recall the answer now, but are these meters on the exterior of, they're inside, so people will need to...
(Inaudible).
Okay, so people will need to then be home for the...
(Inaudible).
To replace? Thank you.
(Inaudible).
And I just want to clarify, these are budgeted.
Seeing nothing further, Ms. Hamilton, would you mind once again to read or call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2023-44 passes. Resolution Number 2023-45 be presented by Mr. Reynolds and will require three readings. Unless the rules have been suspended, but I know it requires Ms. Hamilton to read the title.
Resolution Number 2023-45. A resolution petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio, for a change of township lines to conform with the corporation limits of the City of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, we've dealt with a number of these in the past, in the spring, I guess, before we went on break. If you recall the background on both this ordinance and the next one, or resolution and the next one, in discussions we had with the Wayne County Auditor, we discovered that we had kind of created a hardship a little bit, not only for the auditor's department, but also the homeowners involved in a lot of the fact that, as things currently stand, they're paying slightly higher taxes than they probably should, and also can potentially create some problems for the Board of Elections. So it's kind of de minimis type of stuff, but I want to thank the administration for seeking out these issues and addressing them where they're possible. There's a few that apparently are logistically not possible to address, but we're dealing with the ones we can. So the first one we have here is a tract of .234 acres at 903 West Highland. It was annexed in March of 2021, but at the time, when that was done, there was no follow-up done to conform the municipal boundaries to bring it formally, it was annexed, but not, the boundaries weren't conformed to bring it into the municipal district. So now we're seeking to fix that, and that is the purpose of this resolution. And I would again make a motion to suspend the rules and put this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappich.
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. I turn to you again, Mr. Reynolds, for another motion.
I would move for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-45. I'm sure, resolution 2023-45.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any discussion? We've done this a number of times over the past year as we've taken... Had more people and properties come into the city. Seeing nothing further, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-45 passes. Resolution number 2023-46 again will be presented by Mr. Reynolds. And as he's already pointed out, it pertains to similar circumstances. I'm sure passing the last one and passing this one will make Ms. Leathers and very happy because it's a nightmare for when these aren't conformed. So before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-46. A resolution petitioning the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County, Ohio, for a change of township lines to conform with the corporation limits of the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. As Council President indicated, this is another conforming the boundaries case, again on West Highland Avenue. That's really not too much of a coincidence because as that area developed along West Highland and Oak Hill prior to annexation, so there was plenty of private septic there. And people did not annex when the opportunity came, or first time around. Typically now, they're annexing when they need city sewer and water. And that's why it's kind of a piecemeal approach. This particular annexation that we're talking about took place in 2017. It's further west on West Highland. It involves five lots ranging from 1142 West Highland to 1238 West Highland and two lots with a Star Drive address for a total of seven properties in all. Total of 4.492 acres. Again, I would make a motion to suspend the rules and take this at third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds, another motion?
I would move the adoption of resolution 2023-46.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich, is there any further discussion? I should say it will also make our auditor happy when we do this as well. Seeing nothing further, again, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-46 has been passed. Ordinance number 2023-22 will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-22. An ordinance amending Chapter 160, bidding procedures and contract requirements of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, by increasing the amount of the limit for competitive bidding.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We currently... Our current ordinance language mimics the previous state statute and requires bidding on any expenditures over $50,000. This new proposed language would mirror the current state language for bidding limits and would raise the amount from $50,000 to $75,000. It then also would continue that every year beginning in 2025, it would then increase automatically by 3% every year. Fairly straightforward in what the request is. And I have nothing further to add, so I will motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. I was just going to say, you know how to kill a room there. But Ms. Warden to the rescue.
Yes.
Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
I think if my math is, we don't have enough to suspend the rules. So we will consider ordinance number 2023-22 to have had its first reading. That brings us to ordinance number 2023-23. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-23. An ordinance amending Section 161.02, donations of cash or marketable securities, insurance proceeds of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours once again.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Dordia... I'm assuming this was Mr. Dordia that was going through, looking at some legislation specifically related to donations of cash and marketable securities. The discussion was that we should probably raise that amount to $25,000. And then it was brought... It was gathered that we also have grant proceeds that periodically are in smaller quantities, less than $25,000. And so ultimately, what you see before us this evening is an amendment of the current legislation to make that correction for both increasing the amount from $15,000 to $25,000 and then also adding grant proceeds as part of this... Part of the donations of cash or marketable securities, insurance proceeds. So it's fairly straightforward. Was there anything that you wish to add, Mr. Dordia? Or did you gather it all up, huh? All right, well, very good. Seems like a prudent thing to do. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended. Mr. Sanders, another motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any discussion? Does this make your job easier, Mr. Dordia? Otherwise, that's a real ordeal to get $500 on the books. Yeah. He would have gained a lot of popularity calling us in to pass a resolution to accept $500. Seeing nothing further, Ms. Hamilton, would you call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023-23 passes. And for the last time this evening in your first meeting back from your hiatus as clerk of council, would you please read this?
Resolution number 2023-47. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
And this will be presented by Mr. Sanders. And when the county auditor's resolutions come, they never have whether or not it's third reading. So I didn't slate it for three readings. But I think that it suffices that the clerk of council will record everyone's vote on the resolution itself. So that being said, Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back on the 31st of August, Mr. Dordia received from the county auditor the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for 2024, which is what you have in front of you on the second page in Schedule A. And so at this point, we statutorily need to accept this and move this along by the 30th of September to Ms. Underwood at the county. And in light of the fact that we had discussed this previously related to our 2024 annual tax budget, which was resolution 2023-36, which we passed on June 20, at this point, I would motion to suspend the rules of counsel and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion? We do this annually. Well, if you would, for the last time, please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-47 passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion. And there's a number of people that have at least signed up. I don't know if anyone are here. I think Mr. Gantz is still here, so maybe not. Nope. But is Ms. Slack here?
Mr. Gantz is here.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Gantz?
Yeah, he's right here.
You want to speak?
I signed up to speak for the growing pickleball community that was here tonight. Jack asked me to keep this short and sweet. He said he wanted to say thank you. So thanks for everything you guys did over the weekend. The group is happy to stay at Christmas Run Park and to see a new court built off of... In a new area. So thanks a lot.
Ms. Slack?
I'm going to speak. I'm Ann Sturbaum.
Okay, you're switching up on me.
Yeah, we're switching up on you. I'm Ann Sturbaum, 1491 Ruth Circle. And I just wanted to say, yes, thank you for the work that you've done and the resolution that you've come up on the pickleball and the tennis courts. I would like to tell you all that I went to Ashland today because someone told me that Ashland, the city of 17,000... And you know Worcester has, what did we say, 27,000? Ashland, the city of Ashland, has redone their courts at Brookside Park. They're beautiful. They are totally re-surfaced. They have new fences. They're gorgeous, six beautiful tennis courts. And also at the Sister Park Hand Grove, there are gorgeous new... Six new pickleball courts with facilities, with restroom facilities, with spectator facilities, beautiful parking. And I think that Worcester can be forward-thinking enough to maybe provide those kind of facilities here for Worcester. And I also had a question about whether the new developments up north of town, maybe there's some green space being allocated that could be considered for such a new facility. Pickleball is a new... Kind of a new sport, and it does deserve to have a new facility, a new place to play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Smith, I didn't mean to... I didn't forget you. So please, take the podium. And I think what you have at least presented to us, council members, I think is a very worthy cause, so...
My name is Linda Smith. I live at 3108 Bayberry Cove. I want to thank you for this opportunity to address this body again this evening. In the past, I've tried to keep you up to date on the ways that the Worcester Homeless Task Force have made efforts to provide overnight shelter for our homeless population. And I will try to keep you updated. And that is, we go forward with plans for the winter here. But tonight, I want to bring you up to date on a second objective of the task force, and that is facilitating the availability of public restrooms for the city of Worcester that are clean and accessible for 24 hours a day. This has been a high priority for the task force since our inception in 2020 and even before COVID has created a crisis, which led to the mandatory closing of the public restrooms. Since March of 2020, until recently, our friends at the Westminster Presbyterian Church have been generously underwriting the weekly cleaning and maintenance fees for our facility located in the parking area of St. James Episcopal Church. And it's maintained by our friends at the Trinity United Church of Christ, who kindly regularly dispose of the trash and debris to keep that area, the surrounding area, the area surrounding the facility clean and welcoming. Tonight, I'm publicly promoting the Worcester Task Force campaign for financial donations from the community to ensure that the availability of this important public service will be available for 24 hours a day, 360 days a week through the coming year here. Not only does this public restroom provide access and privacy for our unsheltered neighbors, and especially appreciated by our female patrons, it is also available... That's my... The end.
Please finish.
It's also available to visitors that might be coming to Worcester looking for a place to take their children to the restroom while they're shopping or whatever. And I've given you all the information, so you can read it on your own and make your decision. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the miscellaneous.
I just want to speak. I just wanted to go first. I'm Martha.
Okay. I didn't think I overlooked you when I...
No, I just want to thank everybody for hearing all my tennis friends that called you and emailed you and so forth. We were feeling very invisible, and you rectified that. And I'm pleased. Thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us to the miscellaneous portion for council. And we'll just start with Mr. Reynolds and work down to Mr. Cavan.
Mr. Reynolds? I want to thank both the tennis community and the pickleball community for weighing in with their wishes. And for those few that weighed in both ponds, I also want to thank Jack Miller and Deb Miller for their generosity in making sure that the alternative plan are going to come to fruition. And I think Mr. Gantz spent a lot of the weekend brokering that deal. And he's here. I want to thank him for his role in making that happen. I think he had a lot of good practical input, playing both sports. I know he had a lot of contact with Kurt Denning and with Joel over the weekend. And I think what they came up with is going to be a very nice solution and a growing asset to the community.
Ms. Knappich?
I just want to echo what Mr. Reynolds said. It never ceases to amaze me, the generation of this community, the generosity of this community. When something comes up and someone, we last saw it with Christmas run pool in a big, big way, where people came together and they said, we, we can put some private money toward this. And I want to thank those people who did. I'm glad we were able to come up with a, with a good resolution. Hopefully everybody will find time to, to get their outdoor sports in before the snow flies. And other than that, I am glad to be back to see all my fellow council members and city, city folks, so good to be back.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I just want to announce, I think we'll have a public health and leisure meeting on September 18th. We'll start it at 6:30 because that's when we start committee meetings. I don't think we're going to have an hour's worth of things to cover to discuss the pickleball and tennis courts. But I think that at that point, we'll probably be positioned to give some more clear definitions as to where we might, we go ahead with it. And allow people that came this evening and, and did leave because we knew we were going to be having this meeting, so we want to give those folks a chance to, to speak on their, their topic as well. So September 18th at 6:30, we'll have a committee meeting. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Ms. Warden?
Other than welcoming Ms. Hamilton, thank you, you've done a wonderful job tonight. I have nothing to add, thank you.
And Mr. Cavan?
I would welcome Ms. Hamilton back as well. And I'm all square, good to see everybody after summer.
And I thank you, Ms. Hamilton, you didn't make a beat, it was just like old times again, so thank you very much. And I see Mr. Myers is motioning to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.